And there are three abatements, two for 2019 and one for 2018. And the first one needs to talk about the owner. And Mara owns this property. And this is trying to clean, there's two accounts associated with this. And this is one account that didn't get deleted out of trio. So it's now going to be deleted and abated. Any questions?
I do have a question. If dwelling is dilapidated, is that a reason to have an abatement on taxes? Aren't they more responsible to keep it undilapidated? Just a question.
Okay. If the dwelling is dilapidated, it exhibits deferred maintenance.
Okay, so it's not like it's going to fall apart.
Yeah, it's, it's, it needs to spooch enough, it needs a new interior, you know. Folks can dilapidate their, their properties through the process of remodeling. You know, they can actually devalue their properties. And so what happens is they're in the course of remodeling. Like my property, for example, I've been remodeling it for years. And when it gets assessed, it's assessed at a full valuation as it would be if it were done. And then deductions are applied. And I call this one dilapidated because it's, the amount of deferred maintenance is in addition to actually remodeling it and removing it. Like the chimney, the heating system, the plumbing, you know.
So do you, to your point, why is it coming off?
What is the total tax?
Well, my point is why are we, why do today get rewarded for dilapidation?
Well, right now, it's, I say dilapidated, it, 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 that's just the structure. And it's about half of what it was. It assessed for about fifty-eight thousand. It's now pretty much a, it's a dry storage shed is what it is. Okay, it's got a good basement, it's got a good roof. Hopefully they'll find the money and the time to restore it to its former grandeur. Okay, that answer your question? Yeah, if the value's not there, I can't, I can't leave it there. You know, I have to.
I, I know the house. I know the house, I know which one you're talking about.
Yes. So fortunately, I went through it and the basement's dry. So it will come back. It's a good, it's got good bones. And hopefully it'll be restored. Okay? Any other questions?
So the only, the last question I had, Jim, what was the total tax on this property? I'm assuming it was like eleven hundred dollars from the end, right?
Yes, it was like twelve hundred or something. Okay, I can't, I don't, you know, it.
Yeah, no, no.
Is that around, the total assessment was around sixty-four hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Sixty-four thousand. It's now down to like forty.
Okay, yeah, yeah. No, I know which house you're talking about, it's a, it's a.
It's what?
It's in hard shape, the house.
Yeah, I took the chimney out.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I went through it and it, it, everything's there to restore it.
Right.
You know, the ceiling is, it, the good news is that it is not leak, nor does it have excessive mold in it. It has, you know, pretty dry.
Right.
And so it's got a chance to be a good property.
I won't make a motion to accept these. The payments, that is what.
So sad.
All right.
The house is over.
Jason made a motion?
Yeah.
Jason made a motion. Please second it. Nobody yet.
Either for either one or the whole, because.
It's the same for, oh, yeah.
Are you treating them separately?
Well, I make a motion, we pass seven, seven, three, the count seven, seven, three.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I guess my point was with the question that when you get a building that goes to the point from dilapidated to abandoned to like not useful to being an eyesore and dragging the whole property down because they don't want to keep it, then why should they be rewarded for an abatement?
It's not a, it's not a reward for me, it's simply, it's a structure. My job is to assess valuations of properties. And regardless of how they got that way.
Is it a dangerous building, the unfortunate building?
Oh, no.
So if it's, if it's.
Well, it's uninhabited and.
I guess a picture would have helped for us.
Is it fair to ask the intent? I mean, you're saying it's, it's, you're, you're, you're saying it's not valued.
The house is unlivable.
Okay, and then, but it is the opportunity that the ownership can then improve it, in which case the value of the home would increase, in which case the tax revenue would come back.
Right, the guy is a, the guy that owns it is a character.
I guess, I'd just like to see.
What he did is he bought this house.
What guarantee we have of that?
He bought this house at a very low price. It needed, it needed fixing. He began working on it. And I believe he, I believe he, he made sure the roof was okay and the basement was solid before he bought it. And then he began working on it and quit working on it. When I asked how come the project was terminated, it was not able to find the time right now or the money to continue, you know, to improve it. They bought it as an investment. I assume that at some point in time they're going to.
But he knew the taxes, what the taxes were when he bought it, and I don't see why we have to contribute almost eleven hundred dollars into him helping him fix it up. Because he did buy it as an investment and not a single family home for him to live in.
Right.
So that's my point.
Well, you know, it's your decision, I mean, you know, I.
Usually we, you know.
I mean, we voted, we voted for seven, seven, three, the other one's.
Did you vote, I got the motion.
I don't.
Yeah, we, we, we're all in favor of that one. The rest of them, the rest of them are done, so.
Yeah, the, the, this is simply the, the evaluation.
Yeah, I made the motion on the other one.
Right, right.
He's, he's, they have not maintained the property. And they have, they have altered the characteristics. And they took the, you know, chimney out, fireplace and, and there's a big hole in the floor and insulation has fallen down. But, you know, it sat at, the house sat at, it was originally assessed at forty-nine thousand dollars. And then I raised the assessments on the property to like fifty-eight thousand dollars.
But then they bought it.
And then some, well, who had it?
We actually, you know, Jim, I appreciate your explanation, but we've already been passed that we didn't get.
Okay, we're done with that.
For now, I mean, I'm sure it can be revisited with pictures and other explanation maybe.
Oh, well, I.
Not today. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
All right.
Make a motion when you join the second meeting.
Second, did we make a motion, did we didn't make a motion?
We didn't have to, we just opened.
But we have to make a motion close?
Close, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, six years, we're getting it, we're getting it, Dan, all in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion then sign the warrants.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Do we have to make a motion then, open the council's meeting after the assessor's meeting?
Probably.
Yeah, after six years, I got that one.
She can just open the, you can open it, you just have a motion to close.
All right.
Well, that seems to be one way.
I'm, I'm, it's all strange.
It's the gavel.
I see she's talking to you pretty quick.
Well, warrants are making their way around, and make a motion, we sign the warrant, the minutes of September 2nd, 2020, select board meeting as written.
I will second that.
All in favor? Okay, old business, safe harbor update, just that we're going to be having Procter &amp; Co. coming and doing the probing tests this week. They've been delayed because of the, of the wind. But we should be seeing a big barge. Of course, they're going to be putting piling in the state dock. And then they're going to go around the corner to where the safe harbor is going to be. And they're going to be probing the bottom of the sea, of the seafloor to see whether in fact what the sediment is, is it mud, is it rock? And, you know, and so that's going to be exciting. So that's the update. So open bids, bidding bids, bidding bids, a bid?
A bid.
Oh.
This is for.
Municipal paving, local fruit.
And we can accept or reject all bids.
Palm County Concrete and Construction, please go after the following estimates on your construction project, this table summarizes your current estimate activity. Please review both of them. Lubec paving and North Lubec Road, twenty-seven hundred and fifty for fifty thousand. Boot Cove Road, five hundred here by twenty, ten thousand dollars. And Straight Bay, thousand feet by twenty for twenty thousand, so eighty thousand dollars. It's one inch depth.
I would make a motion to accept the bid, subject to Ricky's review.
I'll second that.
All in favor? So, so Ricky says this is what he wanted, then that would be fine. There you go. He really can sing. Open bids for the brand stand.
There you go.
A bid?
Ooh, fan.
A bid?
Ooh.
There you go, it even worked.
If this one is anything close, I would do the same thing if you give it and subject it to the ROI.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it paying for it? Or they're paying up to a certain amount?
They haven't said, they've waited for the bid to come.
Who's less?
It's hell in the water.
It's not a hack. Did it give you that again?
Bank Bore, Bore Incorporated, him, me, him. Job description, complete remodel, Bassett and Lubec.
And what's in it?
That's the ad.
All deck boards, install access, place repair, place root, reroute design, replace posts, set up cleanup, what community bits in that?
In here, maybe?
Yeah. I'm missing something.
The whole thing looks like it's going to be very expensive. You know, they always think you go to a restaurant, one of the prices are low. You can't, you can't afford it.
Well, that's pretty good price, right there. From zero to whatever.
There you go, yeah, we could just assume it's free. You'll have to, okay, I make a motion that Renee follows up on that bid and we might want to put it out again.
I, I'll make a motion, put it out again.
Yeah, yeah, put it out again.
Yeah.
Let's just put it out again. Because can't we wait for the spring to do it? At this point, you're not going to get any contractor that can do it now.
It's going to be spring anyway.
Well, is that what it said? Maybe we should say in the ad that they're working this spring because they might think you wanted to do it now.
And send your prices.
Though if we did miss something, or something, we apologize to.
Yes.
Company, but, so please contact.
So they're vote on that? You voted to put it out the bid again, if there's no price.
I've heard a motion, that's all.
Oh, second, anybody? Oh, I'll, I'll second it. I think you motioned, Jason seconded, okay, there you go.
I made the motion, she seconded.
What, all in favor?
Twenty, twenty census. Everybody needs to fill that out. Yes, that was, this is a plea from Sunrise County Economic Council that only about forty-four point six percent of Lubec has responded to the census. And they're just explaining how important it is for the town to get grants, for the county to get grants. It really comes down to that census number. And so it's just a plea to really pay attention and please do the census. It affects Medicare, I mean, there's a little pamphlet here.
Well, my question is, I have had multiple people call, stop, leave flyers, and I filled out the census the first week. So I, you know, I'm not quite sure where the records are going with this because they should know that I've, you know, it's commonplace and it's forty-four percent. Well, I don't know, I just wonder if they recorded this because.
It's the only mail I get.
All right, on a wider note, we had a letter from what we call a happy hyper. Dear town of Lubec, thank you for the beautiful trails and access to the incredible nature sites from a grateful visitor. We are from the Augusta area and love visiting down east. We range in age from seven years to seventy-one years old. Some of us can no longer do heavy backpacking and really appreciate it, the Cops Brook Shore's upgraded trails. The new Red Point Shorefront is an outstanding place, mind-boggling and appealing. Loved seeing the two-hundred-year-old apple tree, too. We walked most of the other Cops Brook Shore trails as well. What a treat to see the efforts being made to develop or maintain these places. Others of us like full coast backpacking. We already reserved the old house we rented for next year and can't wait to spend that week in Lubec again. Thanks to Lubec and the Butler Conservative Fund and all the other nonprofits that are part of the Cops Brook Shore Coalition. Sincerely, M. Jennings and family. Yes, isn't that lovely? Something positive.
That was following up, I believe, what was the word I used, John?
You said something.
Is it phenomenal, I think, was it? Was that whatever? Okay.
So we have a DEP report for the wastewater. I would, in light of the fact that I was given this today, should have read it but I was at a meeting until four-thirty, I would like to review this report before we put it in the record. Can we, if there's something we have to sign or can we table this till next time?
This is just me, no information. This is just me notifying you of the.
Yeah, for the most of it, it was as.
Did you get to read it?
Yes, it, it appears as that as Bruce has done again, as wonderful and qualified job as, as possible with what it still is.
Right.
There were some corrections, some of which were certainly not of his doing, which have been corrected, and then some that he's been notified of. Correct me if I'm wrong, but nothing particularly major, just more.
Right.
What he needs to do to continue to keep this beast alive until we, we get a new birth.
It's just citing that it's continuing to deteriorate. And there is some structural things that we met with Bill Oliver with. The thing about this is we needed to have a response to the BEP by today's date, uh, no, sorry, yesterday, September fourteenth, Monday, or the fifteenth, I can't remember, whatever. Bill Oliver wrote a letter on our behalf saying that they've met with us, there is a plan to try and fix some of the more deteriorated things. And basically, this is just a plea from the DEP on our behalf to the rural development for the big grant that we're going after. So it's just basically helping our case.
Okay, cool.
But other than that, again, from reading this, is, is thank you again, Bruce and. Who am I missing here? Bruce and.
Kenny.
Kenny.
And Gary.
And Gary to, you know, keeping the old girl moving.
She's in hard shape.
Yeah. So thank you to the, the three of them and Noah's a town, they're in voters, they're doing the best they can and they're doing, as can be, a wonderful job. And thank you for that.
So, green campground, now Mrs. Renee had an idea which I thought was great and I thought we'd share that with the board. Would you like, would you like to say?
Well, yeah, I've, I've kind of made an outline of the property. It's, it's my ballpark figure from the tax map. And I did my best on a rough drawing of what the property looks like. So basically, what do you want us to do with the property?
Renee was thinking it would be really great to do a green campground. We, we have a campground that we can bring RVs to and things. But this would be hopefully low maintenance and it would be, let's say, ten campsites. We probably have to have a few vault toilets and a picking table for each site. There is, coincidentally, which always seems to come up at the right time, a fantastic grant, up to half a million dollars, to conserve land for recreational purposes. So since the town owns this land now, I thought it would go well, I thought it was a great idea, Renee's very well thought out, that it would go well with the Butler Foundation's ideas of the trails. We would, of course, have to have someone collect the fees. I mean, we would charge a small fee for the campsite. But I think we would probably have to have a public hearing on it. But this is really for, for us to vote, that she could at least apply for what's called a letter of intent.
Oh, yeah.
Well, just to see whether she could run the idea by, to this, this grant foundation, to see whether they would invite us to do the grant. And at that point, you would have to have the town agree.
I mean, it means, it does need a lot of work back there.
Well, I think that we would need money out, she was thinking.
You'd need to build a road.
It's your old gravel, that's, is what it is.
Yeah, so we need work, but it would just need a road for, you know, ten campsites near the water. And of course, if you go claim, I mean, I just.
Oh, yeah, that's a second half.
Access.
Could bring access to the clamor.
Yes.
That's the other thing.
Definitely, anyway.
And the clam.
Give them access.
But if we coordinated it with conservation and recreation.
And any small fees that might contribute to.
Then we'd have the money to fix it up.
Right.
So I was hoping we'd get a vote to allow her to write a letter of intent for the grant.
Just a question.
All, all that is, is if you'd like to do this, are we going to get invited? And maybe we have to have.
I mean, I, I would love to, my question just is, what additionally is there, in terms, because it's town property, what is the obligation of insurance and all that regarding the responsibility in that direction? Which certainly then could determine fees and all that.
Right. Well, that's what it's, I'm trying to make it some sort of a moneymaker, renovation.
You know, you can say no buyers, I mean, there's ways of.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there, I'm sure there is going to be some sort of risk and responsibility to that.
There are the towns that do have campground, Millbridge.
I mean, I love, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying it's information.
That's where she got the idea, Jonesport, Millbridge.
I'm just saying, while we address it, hopefully in the future, because I think it's something we have to check out. It's something we have to check out and have the answer for.
Right.
And I think it's great.
But I mean, as far as, as the access for the clamors, that's all been shut down in that area. This would be the only way to get to those beaches.
Exactly.
So that's big for our clamors.
We've been talking about the property since the garage and Sanchez went on.
Exactly, yeah, no, no, I'm behind.
My feeling is if there's conservation, creation and claiming, yes.
Making money somehow, either farm it out for lots, sell off the lots for residential or make an industrial park.
Well, I was always thinking still about like a solar field, which is.
There isn't one in there so far, I mean.
I'm all for recreation first, so we should try that angle first, so.
I think we tried to get businesses so far away from the big beach path that we haven't been able to do that.
Clamber access, yes.
But there really isn't any tent, tent sites in town, really.
No, no.
If it was green. Well, Butler has two in Huckins Beach, but there's two tent sites over there.
So I make a motion that we pursue or allow Renee to pursue this opportunity with the council.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Be your grant for you.
Yeah, that's it.
Go get it.
And giving your tutorial. All right, coastal cleanup is September twenty-seventh to the October fourth. Is that in conjunction with you giving us dumpsters like you so kindly do every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I know Renee will call me, as she always does, remind me.
And what is the restriction? Why don't you mention the restrictions, because sometimes there'd be, there's some things you can't get in the dumpster.
Giant slab of wood.
Just no metal.
No metal.
No metal in the dumpsters.
No metal in the dumpsters.
You will haul metal away, but it just can't go in the dumpsters.
You don't put metal in the dumpsters, so. And no tires either, right?
Correct.
No, that's our box, no tires and no, no metal.
Susan would kill me if I didn't get any tires in there.
If they break them.
Well, I knew that.
Put aside.
I'll pick them up, yeah.
All right, general assistance.
It's an ordinance that you have to fill out every year.
Okay. We're not going to do the actual, the local meeting, see whether an inspiration comes, all right? All right, I make a motion that we sign the general assistance ordinance appendices. The municipality Lubec adopts the MMA model ordinance GA appendices the period of October first, September thirty, twenty twenty-one. They are filed with the Department of Health and Human Services and compliance with Title twenty-two MRS A four and three oh five four. Turn a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. President.
Did Rick do anything with that? Or were you to do?
We're having, no, we're on other business, but tell me, that's next.
Oops.
You're, you're pointing ahead.
My clean place meal is in the oven, I'm working late.
Sugar's in the oven?
No.
Third quarter, fourth, now you're on the third quarter. Okay, so we have to sign the third quarter commitment. I make a motion, we sign the third quarter sewer reserve commitment of forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
I will second that.
All in favor? Yes, these wonderful people came and cleaned the monument stone that was Lauren Ronson. And who else was there?
I'm not sure Lauren was involved, but I just wanted to thank them.
Who was?
I said, I know he was, yes.
So they, they went and cleaned the monument stone, it was just great. You're going to do another one, right?
Yep, they're going to do the big one.
So keep going by, the monument, well, our monument, lot there on Main and Pleasant. It's, you can read it now, it's great.
These are some deeds that, this is a quick claim for the tax acquired property. The person paid for it is both, so we just need you to sign the deed.
Okay. And I'll make a motion, we signed a quick claim, need for map, zero, zero, eight, lot, zero, forty-eight, dash, one.
So both.
All in favor? And this is the ones where they got your middle initial, so they don't, because that's the deal with the stuff is the way they do it, it will be illegal. And you need a witness, who wants to be a witness? You can, I'm not sure, you always get someone.
Oh, I'm an over, I'm an over, so.
You can't have a witness.
That's a rule.
Well, Renee, this is another deed. You signed a deed last meeting to release a piece of property for tax purposes that was from decades ago. Unfortunately, the deed that was written had a dead person on it and so it could not be used. So now they, the lawyer has rewritten it, cited the deed.
Do we have to pay for this?
No.
Okay.
No, they're recording it, we just have to release.
They'll be out deed, this is amazing.
So. So you're going to have a problem here, so. So you're going to have a problem here, so when you do this, partially appeared before me, the names you've got together too. You've got Sonya and Rachel, you're.
I'll cross off.
Well, if you do cross it off, the people signing it have to initial that as a legal document. If you cross that off, you're going to already have to, you have to put a little thing here, and these guys here are going to have to initial three times if it's legal. Can't touch anything. So I make a motion that we sign this complaint.
So.
All in favor? And if we have to do it again, because it was scratched out, we'll do it again. I don't know if the lawyer will take it, because you can't swear the notary that Rachel and Sonya signed, and they weren't here. As much as I know about real estate. Many updates.
There's a recycling meeting this Friday.
I've done this twice. Yeah, you know what, did they send this to you? They need to fix it, this is not going to go through, you're going to have to send it back.
They want closing.
But, yeah, but none of this isn't right, these people aren't here, this person isn't here, and this person is twice, so if they.
They're chasing on that.
Yes. I just didn't believe that. An initial here, initial that the change is here.
Turning it up to the CD.
Initial up here that we cross that stuff out. Well, they should have asked who was going to be there.
I did hear from Rachel, but she called people home, and she wants to have a recycling committee this week.
Yeah, Friday. I heard from her daughter that she couldn't do anything for ten days.
Four.
Nothing for four, ten days, so I don't know.
She hasn't been there.
She can put it on there, but I think that she's good for ten days. She's being bad.
We don't want her to push it.
No, we have already one problem.
Public comment?
Oh, good.
Uh, this is an easy one.
Okay.
I come to you tonight on behalf of Apple, the Association for Protection and Promotion of the Lubec Environment. Contrary to a lot of rumors, Apple is not being discredited, it's being put back together and put back together better. And we are going to be having a public Zoom meeting in October, on October sixth. And we are requesting permission to have the Zoom meeting link posted on the town's website. This is a one-time deal, we are required to have a meeting once per year, and this will be my first one. And one of the things we will be announcing is that because of the COVID issue, there are going to be no billings from Apple for twenty twenty. So whatever we've done for the year will be paid for out of funds that we've already got.
My only concern is why can't you put the link on the community bulletin board?
It's going to be on there, we're trying to get as broad exposure as possible. It's going to be on the community bulletin board, Apple has a Facebook page, it's going to be a public announcement news table. And we're looking for the sports venue, just so we can say we've covered everything possible.
That's up to you, Renee, what is the procedure for town, it's not a town function.
I would think actually maybe the link to the Facebook page or something might be appropriate.
We've done that, and I've tried to compare it to the marathon, we've put a link to the marathon page on there. And John did call me about it today, and I asked him to ask you both.
And we're asking you what the name.
Well, this is what I was thinking, in the name of COVID, which is what this whole thing is because of, you're doing a Zoom meeting because of COVID.
That we can help.
We can help.
And it is a nonprofit, so we should.
We don't make a dime out of it, we're all for the businesses.
Right, it sounds, it should be fine. And it's just going to go on a calendar, on a calendar, just like we do for the slumming meeting.
That sounds fine, so.
I'm all for it.
I'm good.
Yeah, we'll all be for that.
Thank you.
Um, yes, Nancy. Mine is not up, I have two questions.
All.
Did we pay for the sidewalk?
Yes.
So what are they doing about the ends of towns in late?
I've got an, I can answer that.
Okay.
I got an email today from the resident engineer who is emailing the water company for them to find out if they have moved those waters. They're waiting for the water shut-off to be raised.
So they say, and so, you know, like.
Yep, and his email said that he, they had thought that they would have the job done last week, I guess.
Yeah, because it's just a bump, you know what I mean? Because like, it's so wicked cool that they have that sidewalk and then like bam, there's like.
Mercy.
Finished, stoned, you know.
We're at the mercy of the water company.
Our water company? Well, can't the select board put a little pressure on the water company?
Nope, they're their own.
Right.
They're their own.
Sure, the water company, that's your own.
Pressure on the water company, you know.
They'll shut us off.
But they're not doing it, she thinks folks who have done it last week.
I'm just, you know, it's just, it's pitiful, but you know, it's like.
I haven't heard a reply yet.
You look down the street and it looks so gorgeous, and then when you're walking.
Maybe we could call.
Or, you know, a gentleman that uses a wheelchair to go down it every day, you know, it's like really.
That is rough.
It is rough, and if we pay for it, then something's not right.
It's not, yeah, I don't think it's been paid yet, but we are paying for it.
No doubt, and then my other question is more just in a opinion, or I'm asking what you guys think. I don't know if any of you attended or have been hearing that, you know, the school board's thinking about looking for a one-point-five-million-dollar loan for the town to take to put a new heating system in the school. And I just wondered if you heard anything or what your opinions are or anything like.
They would have to have a town meeting.
They know that, I'm wondering about your opinions of it.
My personal opinion is way too much money.
I knew that, but I just was curious, you know.
Because the last time I went to a school board meeting, it was going to be a half a million, and I thought that was too much. So one-point-five million is out, out of question, my personal, personal, but I don't know what the rest is left for. They should keep shopping, keep shopping, look around, were you at that meeting too?
I haven't missed one in years.
You haven't missed one at all?
Do that figure as well, and in the budget itself.
How did it go from half a million to one-point-five?
Well, I don't, and don't go into that number, but I went to that presentation that they did a couple weeks ago. I did not go to the last meeting on the tent where the school board was supposed to talk about it, but they had mechanical systems, is that the name of the company? They're a big state, they came in and did evaluations for the building and a new heating system. And their recommendation was this over-million-dollar proposal that they would help the town look to acquire, you know, loans or, you know, to accomplish it. And from my own personal past experience, being on the select board, building a building, they were the people that did the system for it. And it is a complex, windows don't open, brand-new building, and it is really, what they're proposing has nothing in regard to like fixing the bad windows or any of the things on the building, but they're, I'm afraid the school board is maybe thinking of moving this forward. And I just was wondering, you know, what the select board thought or if it had been, you know, because last they talked about trying to get it on the November ballot.
Nancy, the select board represents the town, and specifically, we collect the taxes, which have been.
I understand.
And that pays for the school thing, so I think as a collective, select board, we certainly want to know way more about the proposal before it gets spread around town that we're all of a sudden spending one-and-a-half million dollars on heating.
Well, what they talked about at that meeting was that they were going to try to have it on the November ballot for the town, you know, which.
Is that possible?
If I sat there going, oh, I'm not doing that, because they're printing ballots like any moment, you know, they already are.
This election will be the worst election in history. So I would not condone that.
And then just the other part of it, that, you know, the school owns the building, when you get rid of the AOS, we still have the RSU, you know, that, I just was curious what you guys do about it, or thought, or if you even knew that those meetings kind of happened, and that's what the last kind of put out there to the public was the idea.
The evening.
From us.
So, like, we've gone to the taxpayers, run it by the taxpayers, have a public hearing and everything else. I don't think they have time to do anything for November ballot.
No, I don't either, but, which, you know, because their talk is that it is an antiquated boiler, and they don't know what they were doing if it broke, just went there, blah, 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 you know. But it's like, I just was curious.
The last I sat through was a half-a-million-dollar system, but there was two boilers. And they were going, and I spent quite a bit of time explaining that there was going to be, one boiler had to come out, but the other one in, so they were going to do two at the same time, and it was going to be separated from the high school wing. That's the last I've heard of the year.
They put, they put like thirty thousand in this year's budget that allowed for this engineering study that presented this new plan.
How much was put aside for the afternoon study?
I think it was thirty thousand, I think it was, you know what I mean? Like, they spent a bunch of money and had these folks in and had the big presentation, and, you know, some folks are thinking maybe over a million dollars for heating that building, this would happen, I don't know, I just was curious.
One of the changes since that they talked about was the electrical service coming into the building, the panels are rusted and antiquated and should be changed as well, so it's not just changing boilers, it's also changing electrical service coming into the building.
Well, I'll add that several of the engineers that looked at the electrical panel were reluctant to open it because of the rust. It's all corroded on the bottom, and they were afraid that if they opened it, it could collapse on them. And so it's, the electrical panel is in dire condition, partially because of water leakage from the system in the same foot. The electrical panel is in the same root as the boiler.
Oh, it's a little dungeon in the middle of the building.
If you take a good walk around there, it's a lot of work.
Oh, absolutely.
The whole building needs a lot of work.
In the one-and-a-half million dollars that they're proposing to spend, there is zero dollars for energy conservation.
Yeah.
Just a heads up, like, you know, thought, sleep well tonight.
I'm thinking, that is not when I need to go to sleep. We're still trying to like swallow the fire truck and the revaluation. Reevaluation and the five-million-dollar sewer plant.
Sewer plant.
Yeah.
I think that would be a hard sell to you, the taxpayers.
Oh, I agree, but on the other side, I mean, there really is the.
Heat pumps are off.
Well, the retired teacher in me is kind of like, you know, if you want to have an environment that helps kids get educated, you have to have some respect for the building, you have to, you know, it's stewards of the property. It is probably the best piece of property the town of Lubec owns, is that building. When you look at like what does the town own, you know, I think you should move down Holland to that building.
They would, but there's no heat.
We got a boiler.
And the lighting, if you go in, you sound.
We're not dealing with school boards. The SAD legal structure is considerably different than that of a normal school board. The SAD is intended to be multi-talented, and that's how it was formed, we had the town being Truska. We haven't had a Truska student in years, we haven't received a penny in Truska tuition in years.
But if you go back to SAD, would we be able to take?
We are in SAD.
We are in SAD, we are in SAD and part of the AOS.
But the AOS is managing it.
The AOS is a draw-up by the newer generation.
And they moved the Truska students out.
We're also in RSU.
Yeah, they're management.
Right.
It's one of my grandkids, though.
Hey, on that subject.
That's why I haven't voted, I haven't voted for the select board.
Did you guys ever get a report from the committee that was looking at the school being?
Well, normally the school board will have a joint budget.
No, you're a subcommittee.
And, yeah.
The select board subcommittee about feasibility of Lubec being alone, like you had that.
COVID happened and they stopped me, they never got, they never got a report of succeeding from the AOS, you know, what the pros and cons, they were supposed to be doing, evaluating that.
Yeah, you know, it tends to, maybe a little.
But I think that. I know who the new chair is, an ex-twenty-two-years-old white woman, I think we will, we will reach out to her and see what's going on. That's what we'll do, we'll see if they, they want to have a joint meeting.
Yeah.
See how we can solve, because obviously, if we've got rusty electrical things, well, something has to be done.
Absolutely.
But there's rapport now.
Absolutely.
So. We've, unfortunately, the select board, before I got on it, before Dan and I got on it, went that route of an expensive engineer for a project that didn't even get approved by the town at the location, and they spent thousands of dollars, and then it never even passed, and we had to redo it again in the location where they wanted it. Of course, it did finally get built, but I think we learned our lesson to not spend a lot of money on an engineering before you have town support on such.
Yeah, I worked on a project where we saved fifty thousand dollars by not having the engineers involved, right?
Yes, that is exactly right, after we had.
Yep.
Yep, mhm, so.
Just, you know, making sure you're aware.
Well, we don't want the children safe, so of course, obviously.
Absolutely.
But something, something needs to be fixed. Awful lot going on, awful lot going on, do we have a comment, oh, come on, another comment, we want one.
No, no, next meeting, I'll be on your agenda. I thank my colleagues for Townsend Link.
Yes, he lives on it.
Because he's one of the four residents, I bet he's it.
Session, huh?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, you? Oh, okay, well, we're going to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six A personnel matter.
Hi, would you like to vote?
All in favor? Thank you for coming. And I know that he did get an extension on his.
I'll tell you what, have you seen?
Nancy, turn that, Nancy, turn that outside light on.
Turn the outside light on.
Thank you.